I'll order the regular board meeting for the village board six thirty PM, uh, six thirty-three PM on September eleventh. At this point, we normally go to pledge of allegiance. I think that's probably the most important thing we can do right now, but I want everybody to take the time, sorry. I'd like everybody to just take a moment to realize the significance of this date in history and the impact upon our society and today, the way we live, the things we have to deal with and everything else and the men and women that serve our communities, our police, our fire, our military. If you don't mind, just take a moment and reflect on that before we stand the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Gray, Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Horn, Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Hop.
Yes.
Grayson.
Here. Thank you. Item number C one, open to the public, agenda item zone line. Please turn on the mic and give your name, address, and keep your comments to three minutes. Any takers? Okay. Next item, letter D consent agenda. Accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Sorry. Pearson and Grayson. Roll call.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Hop.
Yes.
Grayson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Mayor, we got a, we have a notice from Comcast that on November fifth, two thousand thirteen, Comcast will start encrypting limited basic service on your cable system. If you are currently receiving Comcast limited basic service on any TV without equipment supplied by Comcast, you'll lose the ability to view any channels on that TV. If you are affected, you should contact Comcast at one eight-five-five-eight-six-zero-eight-nine to arrange for the equipment you need to continue receiving services. To qualify for any equipment and no additional charge or service fee, you must request your equipment between September fifth, two thousand thirteen, and March fifth, two thousand fourteen and satisfy all other eligibility requirements. That's all we have.
Excuse me, could you please repeat that phone number?
Mr. Hop.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clerk, what was the discontinued determination date?
November fifth of this year.
Just, just, just to simplify, if your TV does not have an adapter connected to the Comcast servers, it won't be able to receive even the basic channels anymore. You'll have to have an adapter or something. Don't want anybody to miss out on watching their favorite football game or anything like that because they don't have an adapter.
Or the Village Board.
Of course. Okay. Is that it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Walz.
Mr. Mayor, I have one item on the agenda for the board's consideration. It is a confidential informational item. The village has received a proposed redevelopment agreement, which would lie within our district number four. What I am seeking is permission by the board to negotiate on behalf of the municipality for this redevelopment agreement. It is broad in scope at this point, and I think we need to narrow that down quite a bit, and that would be my request at this point.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to...
I would make that motion.
Set. Okay. Mr. Walz and Mr. Pearson.
It's a rare...
We've got a great voice for you going on. Hell, we love each other. You may continue, Mayor. Oh, thank you. I'm going back up here. Wow. Yeah, I'd like a roll call on that, please. A roll call on the motion, not a roll call on trustee Popal, I'm going to go back to...
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Hop.
Yes.
Grayson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my part of the report. We wish, at this point, a couple of department heads can give you a couple of things.
Absolutely.
At this point, Chief Sepharo asked you to give your report this time.
Okay. I'll start out with Lawfare. It was, for us, it was a pretty resounding success. Nobody died, nobody was injured. We didn't have any crimes committed. We had no major incidents that required reports. Everything that came into our logbook file was returned, so I don't think that could have been better for us than it went. Second thing I have to talk about real briefly is that September is hero-ready month, and hero-ready month is sponsored by FEMA. If you go to FEMA.org, you can check in and get information like this. You'll see that as it comes up. And what it does is it gives you the ability to dial into how to make a plan for yourself in case of emergency, how to build yourself a kit in case of emergency. It's useful information for anything from storms to civil unrest, and this is the month where you can join a community organization through FEMA right now if you decide to do it. The other thing, and last thing I'll talk about tonight, is that being that today is nine eleven and the Wounded Warrior Project is real close to my heart, you know, we need to support our people that come back when they're injured. WoundedWarriorProject.org is where you can go to. You can make a one-time donation, you can make an ongoing donation if you choose to, or if you don't want to go to the website or you can't go to the website. I don't work for them, but I have general donation forms that you can use the mail in if you'd like to see me, and I can assure you that they spend the money on the people. Eighty-two cents of every dollar you send them goes to the people. The others are running everything from doing logos like this on Under Armour, which donates about a million dollars a year to that project. So it's a worthwhile endeavor, and if anybody's interested, you can see me during the executive session. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a few things, and it's on Fall Fest.
First of all, just want to make, to say publicly that DJ is my hero. He came to the plate. For the public, we put this plan together, me being the village trustees, mayor, in a very quick amount of time, and a lot of pressure was placed on everyone. And I think everybody's, everybody pulled from the gut, from the heart, and came forward and did an outstanding job. It came together. There were many pieces to this positive make it work, and everybody played an important role. But much of the weight was put on DJ's shoulders, and he did an incredible, incredible job, him and his guys, and I'm proud of him. I'm proud of him. I just wanted to say publicly, we're really grateful for DJ. The success, much of the success is because of him and his guys, and I think it solidified the village. Each of us, they've played a part, community, all of us. I think it solidified us in any relationships. There might have been some friction in the past. I think we did a lot of smoothing, and I think communication became key in this, to make this work. So I just wanted to touch on that. I'm grateful for our volunteers. Some of the volunteers, well, everybody worked during the week and then came here toward the weekend, and not much sleep, not much rest, and yet, great attitudes, positive, everybody excited about what was happening, and it was exciting in the air. Kudos to deputies that came, the auxiliary deputies, our FEMA folks, they were in a week-long conference away from their families and they came here to stay on the post. Riverside stepped forward, they sent their first aid personnel. And I can just go on and give out a lot of things, but some of the comments, I think were encouraging, but I'm really soliciting critiques as well. The only way we're going to get better is by, we point out what we need to, where we were weak, and there is obvious clarity weaknesses, and those will be addressed. But some of the pluses was our layouts. We had a safety guy from the oil company who's on a nationwide safety committee when it comes to stages and arenas and stadiums. He said this is one of the best layouts I've ever seen. Alpine, the senior owner of Alpine, who's been in carnival business over forty years, said this is probably the best layout I've ever seen. So major marks on our layout. It focused on safety. The chief did, your guys did an outstanding job of keeping, keeping a watchful eye, keeping at work with what we needed to do. And I think the reasons why we didn't have a rest is just because we had a, we had a presence that was out there. One of the other things I wanted to point out was our churches. I did reach out to all the churches in the area prior to our event and asked for some help, and help in the area of cleaning up our grounds, and it's a very humbling job. It's not, it's a fanclis job, and DJ's guys were taxed enough. I knew they were going to have a lot to handle, and that's the reason why he asked the churches to give us a hand. And some churches stepped up, they helped us, and there was even two pastors out working the graveyard shift, so to speak, that were out there themselves picking up garbage. And it was, and one of them had to preach the next day, the next morning. So kudos to them, and we're grateful. Overall, I think it was success, and not based upon the money part, even though I think we were successful in that part. The bills are still coming in, we're still making payouts. Sponsors, we just received another check today. One of the area businesses just donated some more money. So monies are still, yesterday we received a check as well. So it's still preliminary to give you the finer details, but money aside, I think this was a success, just for what it did for the community and, I think, bringing a cohesiveness. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, DJ Prizel Zatson, he's off at some training with Ed Johnson from the water department, some continuing education hours, but basically, I know that his report would certainly surround the Fall Festival and how everybody came together, and he made a comment at our staff meeting, and I told him I'd bring that forward, but I'll save the rest for him at the next board meeting. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. I've got a couple of items on the agenda here, on the mayor's agenda. There's a few extra items I want to bring up that are not on the agenda, they don't necessarily require a vote, but they're informational. I received a letter from Congresswoman Robin Kelly, who represents our district, and there's going to be a learning the ABCs of the Affordable Care Act Monday, September sixteenth, from seven to nine PM at First Baptist Church in University Park. And I'll have this, we'll have this posted out in the lobby tomorrow, for anybody who wants more information about that. Additionally, State Rep Anthony DeLuca has invited us to a business networking and resource seminar on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, at Prairie State College. Two oh two South Hasta in Chicago Heights. That's from six to eight PM on September twenty-fourth. Again, that'll be posted out in the lobby as well. You'll notice that most of us are dressed a little more casual today. I believe that it's appropriate for us to consider the possibilities that on extreme heat days, our kids weren't even able to go to school yesterday because of the heat. And I just heard from somebody recently, and a lot of people were mocking our school district for not having school yesterday because of the heat, just some of our schools don't even have air conditioning, and I just found out that some of the schools' neighbors don't either. So it's not just our area. But I guess my point is, is that I know in the past we've done everything we can to make sure we carry a presence of professionalism, but I believe that when it's ninety degrees or hotter, there's no reason why people should be forced to wear ties and be uncomfortable and risk passing out or anything else. So I just want to let you all know, I don't know if we need a resolution for that or anything, but as far as I'm concerned, if it's over ninety, don't bother wearing a tie. We have the IML conferences trustee Horn brought up last meeting, and each of the trustees have a packet that has a list of the, each of the different sessions that are available, merely asking that as quickly as possible that you identify if any of those meetings are of interest to you and better serving the community, and if so, identify which days you're intending to attend and give us back to either clerk hazer or Administrator Wal, so we can make the appropriate reservations for you. And while sometimes people think that hanging out with other officials and all that kind of stuff doesn't necessarily carry much weight, I was recently at a legislative meeting with IML and State Rep DeLuca and had the opportunity to confront a situation we're having in Moonee where we don't have adequate signage for some of our businesses. The blue signs on the expressways, I.DOT District One has, up to this point, kept us from having ample space for signage for more than six restaurants, and we have at least two others that would like to be on interstate signage. And working with State Rep DeLuca's office and his more than wonderful district manager, Donna Fanning, they have contacted Dorothy Dini at I.DOT and determined that there is actually legislation that allows for a total of four signs. Typically, they're categorically lodging, fuel, food, and attractions. But since we don't technically have an attractions, we should be able to use that fourth, fourth day redundant for food. So that's encouraging to know that, you know, we found the loophole that we needed in order to promote the businesses in our community. So, well, Administrator Wallace and I talked about this briefly, and we'll be in pursuit of taking further action to make that happen. So now onto number one on my, on my agenda that has to do with the review of ordinance number sixteen forty-seven. We defined when we passed the ordinance and the order number we needed to implement an ordinance for facility usage, because we had people who wanted to use facilities, and we didn't have a program in place to deal with it, so we had to pass an ordinance. We passed the ordinance, and we used some language in there that was leaning towards the direction we wanted to go, but it lacked completeness. At this point, I believe after talking to the attorney, that I think that there's some relevance in giving clarification to what an organization, a contracted organization is, what the qualifications are for being a community partner, contracted organization type situation, and what the expectation could be, you know, so it's not just a give up, I would say, reciprocal.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, what, upon a further review of the ordinance, it might be well served for the village to have a further clarification as to definition as to organization contracted with the village. The reason you would do this, so there's no, let's say, sense of, there's a better sense of clarity with future determination, whether it be this board, a future board, an ordinance that further clarifies what the organization, the contract organization would be, would help, help us. You could put whatever criteria you feel is appropriate. We can further define that, so in case there's any type of misunderstanding, we'll go back to this ordinance. And then the criteria could be like an accounting to the village, either accountable to the village, this organization, it's up to the board how you want to set those standards. You could also indicate, will they maintain the facilities that you feel is appropriate? So that way you can, you know, you can set the ground rules, and with the ordinance and we have a further definition of that, they'll eliminate any possible conflict and future or confusion.
And this has come up partly because, you know, we have some community partner organizations, baseball, football, whatever, that have routine use of our facilities, and we want to give them priority for, for doing such, because they're taking care of the children within our community. But we also need to make sure that there's a certain level of expectation, you know, as the attorney indicated, some of the things that have come up are doing background checks on their, on their leadership, things that, you know, that seem naturally safe, safety-related things of that sort, you know, within their own organization and things like that. So some things like that we need to review and discuss. So I, I think at this point, I just want to throw it out there, if you have suggestions for the types of things that ought to be the criteria, there might be different tiers, you know, those that are ongoing, those that are just, say, they only need to use facilities a couple of times a year, others that are going to be like three or four times a week because of sports activities and things of that sort, there might be a different level of expectation. So we need to clarify what it means to be a contracted, what do we call those, partners? Organization? Right. So we need some clarification on what you guys would like to see in it. So find out what seems to be the most appropriate, because up to this point, we've rendered a couple of issues already where, because we created a form based on the ordinance, and that form doesn't necessarily apply to, I believe, what are the expectations of the board as it pertains to some of those ongoing established organizations. So to make it easier on the staff, we have to give more clarity. So if you have any suggestions on that, please pencil them down, and we can review those as a book. That'd be great. Next item I have on here is the Fall Fest. I've got to tell you, I, I know I tend to be a little pushy at times.
A little.
Second.
No, that's not the form of the motion. I cannot be more thrilled to see the results we had, pulling together, putting aside the, some of the, what I can just kind of flat out refer to as petty differences that we've had in the past, and I was thrilled to see all the various groups that were able to step up and take part of this. I was talking to some of the guys, actually from Public Works, and another time, some of the officers at one point. And a lot of people look at an event like this as somewhat frivolous, because what does it really accomplish? But I'm going to tell you, it accomplishes a lot. And beyond the obvious, yeah, it was fun, it was good for the community to do some stuff like this, it was fun, and, you know, we all got a little extra sun and a little less sleep, but we had a great time doing some good things. But when I was talking to some of the staff, one of the things that I think people forget is, this is actually a test. Not deliberately a test to test people, but it was a test for, you know, the chief indicated hero readiness, I believe was the label you had for this month. It was a test to see how willing and prepared we were to step up and do what needed to be done. There are, there are those that blew me away, because I didn't realize what they were doing until it was already done, and I was just like, wow. Clark Hazer is just one of those silent, hidden little secrets that most people didn't even realize was going on, until he told me Saturday night, he says, by the way, I might get to be there tomorrow. I go, I don't know what you're doing. But the reality was, is he was here, and I think he was just playing with me, but there are a lot of those were DJ, obviously, everybody saw the work that his staff was doing. But it was a, it was kind of a test of leadership, in a, in a sense, in a crisis. We had six weeks to prepare us for something that should have taken eight months. And what I saw was, I, I saw what helped, you know, Ruben with, you know, getting ready to implement an FEMA program, it's going to help you identify who the people that are already ready as leaders, already have the right aptitude, already have the right attitude, and were willing to step up and do what needed to be done in that situation, and that was a good parallel. If we had a crisis, who do we know we can count on? Because these are the people that not only showed up and did certain things, but some of them, they did a phenomenal amount of homework and preparation in advance for just general readiness. So I got to tell you, I look at this as not only a win, because when I look at the rough numbers here, we were concerned because of the cost, and we had estimated a pretty high dollar amount for what this is going to cost, and I know not all the numbers are in yet, but we are, I'm going to say we're within, in a safe margin, I'm going to say we're within five thousand dollars of paying for everything that we spent. And considering we used to spend that much just to, for the previous organization to do their fireworks, you know, that's as good as a break even, considering the fifteen thousand dollars worth of infrastructure we had to put in for electric and water and stuff like that we had to put out there. So we're pretty close, and it's not just about the money, but it's being responsible and at the same time having a, a leadership readiness workshop, hands-on, and it was very impressive to see the way each individual stepped up in their own right. And it's not to say that just because somebody didn't step up quite the way we expected them to, it just means that we don't show those people aside because they don't measure up, which is acknowledge that that's going to take a little more work to help them prepare for the next level. And that's okay, because we're, we're not about just pushing people aside when they don't meet our expectation, we're about bringing them alongside. And I was thrilled to see a lot of that taking place as well. And so I can only tell you that I was very pleased to see the teamwork that took place. Just thoroughly thrilled and humbled to see all the stuff that was going on that I had no idea, all the stuff, all the detailed things that I still don't know about all the people that were involved, all the sponsors that stepped up, and it was, it was just, I'm not going to say flawless, because we all, those that were close enough to it saw the flaws, but it was perfect for us. I'll say it like that. So, and I got to point out real quick, Dave Holston didn't have a designated point of position, didn't have a title on the event, didn't do any, didn't have any specific responsibilities. I got to tell you, there's guys like Dave that put aside the invite and do what needs to be done. To see Dave out there when we had the special needs, to see Dave out there on the teacups. I mean, how can you not be excited about people that are just willing to, hey, it's not about me, it's about what we can do for the not about me, it's about what we can do for the others? So, I mean, there's so many people that did so much, but thank you, everyone. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two items for the board to consideration. They run hand in hand. Basically, both of these ordinance are drafted pursuant to the previous discussions about the payment stamp. The first ordinance would be the, I'd like to talk about both before we take a final vote, but the first ordinance is the repealing, the payment stamp. It's been questioned by certain organizations as to the validity, wherein we made proof, we wanted proof that all the bills were paid. Upon a request, we're considering repealing that, and in lieu of that, we would have an ordinance requiring payment for all utility service. Therein, if the closing takes place and the seller fails to pay the water bill, any utility service, whether it be water, sewer, garbage, grass cutting, the purchaser will be responsible. Therefore, incumbent upon the seller at a closing to basically verify that everything's paid, and if it isn't, the purchaser will then be responsible for it when they purchase the home. This is done in another neighboring village, a very large village with probably 50,000 residents. Since the referendum was voted down several years ago, this is a way of providing some assurances to the village that your bills are being paid. So if there's any questions, that is what I take on the town. The first ordinance would be an ordinance, repealing ordinance under 1444 regarding the introduction of a payment stamp.
Now, just to reaffirm what you're talking about there, Larry, if there's any discussion or any concern regarding the second, we need to have that out before we repeal the first, because if we repeal the first and we don't implement the second, then we're wrong. So I, I, let's just get all the discussion out now pertaining to both of those, if there is any, I think you guys are well aware of both of the conditions there, that implementing the second is part two, if you will, of, of the repealing of the first. So any discussions on any of that at all?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Just wanted to clarify to you about, you know, the closing taking place, and I just wanted to be assured then to, that the sellers would know when coming or buying in Monee, is there a way with it, we would know when a closing is taking place before they get to the closing table?
Well, Mayor, that, that was the purpose of the payment stamp. You get a lot of closings where documents are being signed and without verification from the village, you can close a deal. The payment stamp was to provide proof that the seller was paying all the bills. When you repeal the ordinance, there's no, I could close a deal tomorrow, and if nothing on the books, you're, you're taking the word of the seller that the bills are paid in full. And nine times out of 10 it is, but there's other village, and unfortunately, we can't do it, but like in Chicago, you don't close a deal without a zoning certification, a housing certification, a water certification, it's unbelievable. But that was done 10 years ago by referendum, the referendum here was voted down, so, you know, once you repeal the ordinance, no, you can close a deal.
So when they move in on Saturday morning at 9:00 AM, they need lights turned on, the water turned on?
Well, not lights, that's, that's the utility dollars.
Well, okay, so they want, you know, they need garbage picked up, they need the water turned on, they call, they, you know, you owe $345, are they?
In a strict sense, correct, but how often it happens is probably few and far between. Usually a seller at closing will sign what they call an affidavit of title, with that verifies that there are no water bills outstanding. That's between the buyer and the seller, the bills is out of that completely. I've seen attorneys, I thought did a very good job, where they go through the village directly and will call the village beforehand for the purchaser and ask the village, are they current with the water bill? Is my client safe? I thought that was, you know, I respected an attorney, I had the seller, I had to go to bill. Uh, so, you know, it's gonna be incumbent upon the seller, you know, they have good counsel, the contract states all water bills paid in full, but, um, sometimes that doesn't happen. But good back to your question, once you repeal the ordinance, there'll be separate accounting, that won't show up on title. So the purchaser will be relying upon the seller that everything's paid in full.
Will this just between the private parties or will this be the same for the bank-owned parties, someone?
Uh, it, it applies to everybody. When it's bank-owned, it's a different situation though, because if it's in foreclosure or bankruptcy court, it's a whole different bargain, you know, because with a bankruptcy, they file, you can't, utilities you cannot turn off by law. But it's, again, hopefully this won't happen, we can always look at it in the future, but, um, honestly, we reviewed other villages that are adjacent to this, and this village does the same thing. And once they put this in, on the books, they again have a problem.
Mr. Attorney, my question was, you know, a couple of them were similar to trustee
Gonzalez, but my final question is, does the new ordinance become a transfer or a lien per se would, would, will come to record the deed?
Yes, sir.
So again, where's the teeth with this enforcement?
Honestly, that'd be internal. What happened when we did the transfer stamp, I did record that ordinance, and that's why it showed up on title. When this ordinance, if it's repealed, at that point in time, what will happen is that we'll send a copy of the ordinance to the county, it'll come off the books. If you pass the second ordinance, trustee Pearson, that's internal, so we would have to, you know, track when a home's put up for sale, notify the appropriate parties, which isn't easy, because you could have a private seller, and it's difficult, it's very difficult. And other villages, not just Monee, but other villages to the west, to the south, have run into the same problem. They're trying everything they can to get the bills paid, and, but like, I think the mayor indicated, which I thought was the idea, you know, with our new system where they can lien it within 13 days to 30 days, that should help us track the water bill. If we find out they're not current, you lien the property, and then that way, that's a guarantee will be paid at closing, and you get your costs and your fees paid. But in the respect, if we do pass a secondary ordinance, that won't be filed with the county, that'll just be internal.
So our only recourse are liens, making sure that we follow with this.
Yes, sir.
Too big time period. Where's our liability at that point? Because now we look at a situation, you know, that one situation, it doesn't have to, you know, occur often, that one situation where, you know, someone just paid $265,000, $300,000 to move into a home, and now they can't even have water services.
They, 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 they have the ability to go back to the seller and mess with it, and that is, that is, if there's an escrow or anything like that, they can actually go against it if there were.
Usually on sale in a home, there's no escrow, you cut the checks, your deal's done. But the mayor's correct, that recourse would, wouldn't be against the village, the seller strike that. The buyer would have the knack in the seller's store, is he can find a seller. You know, they move out of state, and usually, once the check's cut, they might move to another village, or it might be internal. But again, if we can, um, properly watch it for a couple of months and expect to overdue water bills and lien it, usually message gets out fairly quickly, and if you lien it, at that point in time, other people realize that the village is serious about this.
The other thing that, as you indicated, attorneys will do, but conscientious buyer will contact the village and ask, is, are the bills current? That's, that's just diligence on the part on the, on the purchaser. If the purchasers aren't doing their homework when they're purchasing, doing inspection or anything else, then that's an issue. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, I think trustee Pearson, where you're going is, it will boil down to taking place in, in the front office here. Someone who purchases where there's an outstanding bill, they, that purchaser will be in the front office taking the village to task on that. And we will, our recourse at that point is to not turn the water on until such bill is paid. And that's what this ordinance does, is it transfers that responsibility from the seller to the purchaser because they now become the landowner. Attorney Gorcheski, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's basically what it does.
Yeah, basically, then with the affidavit of title, again, at closing, you know, you give the deed, you get an affidavit of title, with that states from seller, they're swearing to the buyer that everything's current, don't have to worry about a thing. Again, 99 times out of 100, it's pretty accurate. For one time, it might pop up, we'll have to address it, but it's, it's an internal thing. We, we have no recourse against the seller. The buyer would have to probably call the attorney, and the attorney could contact the seller's attorney, say, hey, there's a mystery, I'm not getting my services, and I was promised, you know, to be in that position at that closing.
As the front, the front comes down to this, I think you guys are aware at this point, there is a referendum that's put on the, on the ballot, which, from what we're being told, is the only legal way to actually have a transfer stamp. This was a dozen years ago, at least. When that failed, when the voters had the opportunity to vote yes or no to the, to the transfer stamp, they voted no. Subsequent to that, the village board at the time said, we're gonna do it anyhow, we just want to have a dollar amount assessed to it. So they, by a matter of semantics, did the same thing, just took the $50 fee or whatever off of it. But that's, we are, we are being held to task on. And at some point in the future, if the village decides that this is not working and we want to go the route of having a transfer stamp, then it needs to go to the voters of the community, to let them decide legitimate lands compared to us, you know, doing the way it's been done. Because that, that's what we're getting, taking its task on.
So basically, buyer.
Well, just buyer to your home, I mean, yeah. So.
Mr. Mayor, additionally, just to put the, the trustees somewhat at ease, is that with the new billing cycle and everything, if there's a delinquent utility bill, or let's say the water bill, the village shuts that off anyway, and we go and we inspect the home, and if the home is occupied, we have one course of action, if it's not occupied, that would be our indication right there, why we lien and protect our interest in, in those monies that are due to the village.
So, we're gonna ordinance number?
Yes, sir. I'm sure the public is confused on what's going on. Please stop me if I'm wrong, Dave, I have to say it that way, because it is a little confusing. The stamp was the easiest thing. We knew then, when we had a stamp, that things were paid, everything was gonna go smooth. Am I correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
We got challenged by it. We may have to go to court on it. Every house is sold, I may say it that way, because the retailers were against it, and obviously, the vote went against the stamp. So that's why we do not have one, and we won't have one for now. We were trying to correct and protect the village as best as possible. That's how we're set up. That's, I think that's very clear, I'm pretty much right.
Yes, sir. I mean, we're trying to head off a potential issue. And we'll see what happens. But again, Mr. Wallace and the front office staff, if it's two weeks behind, lien it. And once you lien it, they'll get everyone's attention, because you do not close a deal unless a lien's paid in full. Chambers, is that right, Chambers?
That's correct.
See?
My, my one, there's a lot of pain though, I haven't. I wouldn't want to know about that.
We're gonna have Warren turn on the big plan, get any of the other ones.
So, yeah, we're trying to, I guess, head off the potential vote, and that's always our number.
May I ask a question? Remind you, I'm probably out of order. In a sense, a very unique owner situation involved in Gulf Vista, have you considered that situation? Tell us some.
Yeah, actually, you bring up an interesting point, so, because the reality is, the burden of payment of a water bill technically is on the property owner regardless, and with this, it's regardless of transfer of ownership to one party or another. Gulf Vista is an anomaly in the sense that, Mr. Wallace, help me out on this, but I can't clarify how I say this. Each of the residents, we're actually doing management of resources for ELS. You guys individually, the residents in, in Gulf Vista should not be paying separate water bills, because that is not, I mean, there's one parcel there. There's, there are not multiple parcels. We're actually, we're, we're involved in the management of those properties in the sense that we're doing administration of property, or water bill management, and garbage resources and things of that sort, for that entire parcel. Mr. Administrator, you wanna help me out in that one a play?
Oh, you are correct. Can't think of any more plain than that.
So what's, what's been allowed to happen is not gonna change anytime soon, I don't see that being a situation of change, but it is a reality that, right now, we have some, and, and I know trustee Pop is working on identifying the, the proper rates for our water usage and things of that sort, I know that's something he's sunk his teeth into, and he's got a big old pipe in his mouth, and anyhow. One of the other things is that with the water bills, they should not actually even be in the renter's names at all. Whether it be land use, like it is here, or just somebody who's got an apartment complex or something else, it should always be in the name of the titled owner of the property. That way, there's not, none of this renter's deposit that needs to take place in an off, in an off practicality. If anything, Gulf Vista should probably have a, based on the way it's been done, those should actually probably have a renter's deposit, because they're not actually the landowners by that, and again, that's the anomaly there. So it makes more sense for the responsibility and the burden on the water bill to be to the titled owner of the property, and for them to have to manage claiming those funds as compared to the village having to have a, a deposit for every renter in this town, or land user, if you will. You know, it doesn't make sense for the village to have to be doing all that extra administrative paperwork in that situation, just make them all out to the name of the property owner.
And the one caveat I will say on that is that Gulf Vista, through annexation agreement, and I believe that was brought in as a planned unit development, part of that, unlike other parts of the village, a part of that water process is covered under the annexation agreement. So it does make it a little different. However, I will say that in the instances that we have not received payment from a unit in Gulf Vista, ultimately, ELS has stepped up and pays that bill, because we won't turn the water around otherwise. So there's, you know, they're, they're treated fairly and similar as, as the rest of the village, but it is a little unique situation there when it comes to this type of, of utility bill. Thank you. You're welcome.
I just have one thing, I, I don't want them to put that part of our renter in it 'cause I don't wanna make a profit on the garbage, the water and the sewer bill, so I just.
I, I, nor I don't see that changing. It's, it's an understood anomaly, it's not something we're targeting or anything else. You know, do we need a new ordinance number, or is it for the, for the repealing first one?
Yes, sir, I believe you need two ordinance numbers. The first one would be to repeal ordinance number 1444 regarding the payment of a, I'm sorry, regarding the establishment of a payment stamp.
Okay. And what would the ordinance number be for?
The ordinance number for H1 would be 1657.
Okay. Okay, I want to take the motion to approve item number one, the repealing of ordinance number 1444.
I want that motion.
Here, trustee Pop?
Second.
Let's do it. Roll call, please.
Justine Blatt?
Yes.
Grasic?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, now, accept the motion to approve the new ordinance required payment for utility services. That would be ordinance number 1658. That would be ordinance number sixteen fifty-eight.
That's correct.
Okay. I want to take a motion for that. Trustee Gonzales?
Second.
Trustee Riddick. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Gonzales?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point, we have officials' reports. Trustee Pop, I know you've been having fun with your pride and probably haven't had time to deal with it this long.
I feel a little bit like I Doc, being sidewalk, where I just can't get any time. And that's the truth. And it's not due to any shortfall of this village that I don't have the information, 'cause I don't have it yet. You will now be working, so expect some discussion in the future soon.
End of it. All right. Any other trustees ever, anything they'd like to bring up for the special?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Actually, three items, if I could. First, again, is Fall Fest. As I was charged with, you know, seeking out volunteers and assistance doing Fall Fest, I want to personally thank each and every single person that came out, and from the bottom of my heart, you guys rescued me, you know, in a major way, major way. Jackie Hurley and Sid and Betty Dressbeck, you know, from Gulfis, from Pam West, and this beautiful plan that she put together, and now will be passed now to the trustee here. You know, she literally did a Q and A session with most of the folks she came in contact with, and detailed their thoughts and perspectives. To Trustee Gonzales and Sheila Bartlett, you know, they worked tirelessly, tirelessly to put together, and I made a mistake during the closing ceremony on Sunday not to give them their just dues and their due. And I thank you for everything that you did with the beauty and pet contest, and, you know, taking away from, you know, giving him too much credit, you know. Thank you. And she is staying over and helping, even after, you know, putting together all that information, the mailers and following that information, even doing the votes. It's just unbelievable. I am proud to be a resident in Moby, but this weekend has truly made me, you know, ecstatic to be a resident here. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Second thing, I know I've been harping on this, but I would, you know, at this point, like to bring this to the attention of the board with the police commission. You know, being a former police officer, items are, to me, are very important, whether it's raises or rather promotions from the commission, and these individuals oversee these items, disciplinary action, review from complaints from citizens. Currently, our current members, you know, and there's been discussion as to whether or not we have a full commission or not. I believe that after two years of this lying stagnant, that we must, as responsible stewards of this village, must push forward to either relinquish the current board members of the responsibility and implement new members that are self-driven and possess the aptitude to carry this forth. I mean, we've had people apply for these positions, and yet we haven't moved forward. And we can't even hire police officers in this town without a properly-staffed police commission. And we have officers that are in the early retirement, and it takes time to put together an eligibility list, and that goes from testing to interviews to background. The physical agility alone, getting enough officers and enough people to come out to pass a physical agility test, the, you know, passing the background test, you may eliminate a good portion from the physical agility, but you'd be surprised at how many folks fall out just from the background, not only even coming back to even apply. It takes time to place this information together, you know, and taking the, taking the written exam, which is also very important, you know, having so much repeated information. We need this commission in place right now.
All right. On that, turn to your trustee. So, we've had discussions. What is the, because, just so everybody understands, the police commission is supposed to be somewhat arms-length distance. While it's being appointed from the political leadership of the village, it's also supposed to be somewhat autonomous, in the sense that we're not supposed to be battling in those details, and, you know, we're supposed to trust the people we put there, and they're supposed to be doing what they need to be done, you know, getting done. If that's not taking place, does the board have the ability to rescind those positions in order to appoint your position? You, I just wanna make sure that there's a clarification so the trustees in general know that, or...
Yes, sir. There's supposed to be three commissioners, who you indicated are supposed to be independent of the board. It's, I wanna say, are appointed, they're appointed to that position until the term that's fluttered. The terms are supposed to be staggered by a clock, probably one, two, and three years, something of that nature. It's similar to the zoning board. The difference is, they are, as Trustee Person indicated, they promote, they discipline, they, they're an independent agency of the village. I think there's some way of addressing this, or not? They indicate to maybe amend, not the statute, but to address the issue about who will be appointed. And I think if you're appointed, it's the board's concern.
I mean, we hear in other towns where somebody doesn't show up as a trustee for months on end, you can remove them and replace them.
You got it, you could not do, but the board would have to declare a vacancy. A vacancy is determined by the board, you know. Has that person showed up? If they missed enough meetings, if they removed from, if it's a trustee vacated a position of the office, removed from the village, that's one thing. But you can declare a vacancy. If the board feels a vacancy occurred, you have to declare a vacancy for that position. And the vacancy, there's different criteria.
So, this board could identify a vacancy in that commission?
It's one thing, I'm gonna check right now. I understand, but I think there's ways of addressing the concern, Trustee Person, again.
And admittedly, it's been going on, that commission was established, where, a year and a half ago, a year and a half?
Well, much bigger, over five thousand people, so...
So this is thirteen, so that would've been two years ago.
My census was two thousand...
Ten.
Ten?
And we was known those numbers by eleven?
Two thousand and eleven.
Chief, yes, and what, April of eleven? Okay. Okay, so, in two years, there's not been a single meeting that I've worn?
Well, the other option, too, you might consider, and I had to check. If the term were staggered, you have one, two of terms. So, one term I've been already been...
I understand. I guess to refuse, you know, to satisfy the need, and it leaves the chief in a vulnerable situation, and our whole village, frankly, if there is a situation to arise, we're not able to deal with it.
Yes, sir.
And, I mean, we may have some really good people in those positions, but if they're not, what are you, self-motivating, whatever you refer to it as, having individuals like that on certain committees is fine, but not necessarily in a situation where they're supposed to be so autonomous that we can't have them.
Yes, sir.
And it's regretful, because I know the individuals, and, you know, it's... So...
I can prefer a memo for the board review for the next board meeting, as to what your options might, you might wanna consider, and...
Thank you. Is that acceptable?
That's fine.
It's very apparent my thinking is wrong. I thought when we hit five thousand, when it was discussed, that a trustee would be on that commission, almost with the public.
They're separate, right? The police and fire commission?
I mean, you both were adamant, didn't stop that.
It's supposed to be three individuals who are, as the mayor indicated, arms-length from the village board. I mean, once they're put in that position, they recommend for discipline, hiring, firing, in conjunction with the CBA also. But they're supposed to be independent of the village, and that's the reason, so someone can't question if it went to court or a grievance was filed. The board doesn't have say-so on that, and that's...
So, Mr. Pop, there's something, well...
So, what, really?
No.
In the past, there's been what is referred to, when we've had committees and stuff like that, like last go-around, Trustee Horn was a police committee chair. Oftentimes, there's been a misnomer, where the police committee chair often referred to himself as the police commissioner, which is a misnomer. And that was a, that was not an accurate description of it, that was not an accurate title, it was just... Okay. If, Mr. Wallace, I know you serve on a commission like that in the neighboring community, you could probably offer some insight as to the amount of workload and time commitment and everything else that goes into being prepared and set up for all of it.
There certainly is some, but, Mr. Mayor, to offset this issue, and to get it off dead center, I think the attorney is on the right track. I could certainly meet with Attorney Gorteski, and ultimately, beginning next week, meet with the current members of the commission, explain that, you know, what needs to take place, how it should take place, and get them off dead center. And hopefully, I would suggest that by the next board meeting, you should be in a position to make an appointment.
At least one.
At least one, if not more.
Okay. And just so the public knows, we had put a notice out on the website, a month and a half ago. And I've so far only received one person interested in that position, just so you understand. So, it is a very thankless position, and it is a lot of work, a lot of education that goes into it, you get a lot of preparation that goes into it, and it's a very important position. But so far, I've only had one person indicating interest in that, in that, being a part of that commission. It's not wearing a little badge in their wallet and saying, "I'm a police commissioner," and it's... I know Wayne still wants a badge, he might get it either. But it's a lot of work, but it's a very important, very important to the quality of the attitude of the direction of our, of the equipment of our officers, and how they're handled, and everything else. It's a great support mechanism to the chief in what he's doing, and it definitely establishes the heart, if you will, of our community when it comes to serving and protecting. So, it's very important for us to have people that are self-starters, in that capacity, with a fair amount of time on their hands, but not an excessive amount of time, it just, there's certain times you gotta go to a workshop occasionally and find out the latest, just like we're going to I M L, we do workshops for being a police mission. So, anyhow, so if you, if any of you are interested, or you know somebody who might be, by all means, let us know, and additionally, I'll restate the fact that there's also, I believe, at least two vacancies on the planning and zoning commission as well. So, if you're interested in being involved in that, submit your resume, tell us why you're wonderful. We'll read between the lines, we understand, but, you know, let us know why you're interested. Anything else, Mr. Person?
Actually, you touched on it, the planning and zoning. Again, we've had ordinances going to planning and zoning, and additional help in that area is definitely needed to help lighten this load that we're all carrying, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'll be free, put your hand up.
Well, and, you know, naptime was something that I've been working on, too, but we are nearing the fall planting season, too, and I wanted to touch on, of course, now that we have the tree ordinance in place and the replacement program, I wanted to start moving ahead and hopefully working with Mr. Wallace and Mr. Gonzales in the next couple of weeks to establish what that budget is for the fall planting season, and see how much we can get done before, you know, winter hits, not too. And as I, and as I'm seeing, too, there are residents who have taken upon themselves to plant trees themselves, and several of which, I've noticed already, that are on our approved list, so that's something that...
Put it on.
They are not on that list, so that'll be something, too, that we'll have to look at.
I'll take a few more questions. Are you looking for a particular? I, it's a good question right now, I'm just trying to find out where, how do you want this to go along? I assume you're...
Well, yeah, I know...
DJ's not here right now, so I'm assuming you're directing that through the minister?
Well, pretty quickly, actually. I know there are several, Mr. Gonzales, I think you've been, you've brought forward suppliers that are in a very, in our very close proximity, as well as I've had interest in a couple of nurseries close by, to see how big our budget is left for those plans, and see how much we can get done in determining where the houses, you know, that we could plant a little first, for, you know, sixty days.
Yeah, we saw a tree that we've been texting about.
Yeah, so, you know, just work on it, anyway.
Understood. We'll make sure we, DJ, we'll figure out...
It's out of the meeting, that's...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Fine, Jimmy always gets something, so...
Nah, I'll be quiet.
Anybody else? With that, we'll go to old business. Item number one on the old business, we have the Eco Fair subdivision, model homes requesting a deferment of the impact fees. Do we have any discussion on that?
Yeah, I do. You know, I was over, looking through that neighborhood about a week ago, and I noticed that, I believe, I would say, somewhere in the area of eighty to ninety percent of those homes have brick facades on the second story on the front of the homes. Okay? So, I'm wondering if we should make a stipulation, just so for continuity, so they, they're a little bit more seamless between the two, you know, the older homes, the larger homes, and the smaller homes, if we should stipulate that? I'd like to hear some discussion on that. That's what I'm throwing out.
And I'd ask, go ahead.
I think there are some stipulations, too, as you're out.
I believe that there is a requirement for brick on the first floor, and what you see on the second floor, I believe that Seamus could speak to that, but I'm going to make an educated guess that that was an upsell to a part of those plans that went with that. The people, the actual buyers preferred that and wanted to do that, that was an extra to it. But the requirement, I believe, is brick on the first floor.
Oh, I know, I know that is the requirement. However, it looks like most of them have brick on the second floor as well.
Well, the houses we did there first, uh...
Sure, sure.
The first, the first stories we did there, as Mr. Wallace pointed out, was siding on the second floor, but then as the house got bigger, people wanted, you know, all brick and stuff like that, you know? There's quite a few houses in there with brick on the second floor, you know? But again, we're all about trying to sell the houses and get in a low price, you know? And now we're talking sixty-eight thousand dollars extra, if you're stealing over the bridges and break up the, those arches and stuff, it's a lot of money, you know? Again, we could, we could do it, like, when we, when we found the muddies, we would have listed upgrades, we could, we could put it on the upgrade list, you know? And then, again, trace them, you know, to bring the prices up to where we need them to be at, like, you know, but to start off, like, you know, we need to, we need to start off with the basics, we need to take baby steps again before we start on again.
Well, I guess I'm trying to strike a balance between the, you know, billing, you know, houses at specific price points for you, the other side is making sure these houses have some continuity with what's already there.
Larry, if you could, I know there's some major points to what we're addressing here.
Yes, sir. Just to refresh the board and for the audience who wasn't present for the last couple of board meetings, Seamus Flanagan is... board meetings, Seamus Flanagan is owner of Eagle Fair Estates, and Mr. Flanagan came to the zoning board roughly about one month ago, and he wants to start rebuilding in Eagle Fair subdivision. He asked the zoning board and his full board for three, and if I'm incorrect, let me know, three, not concessions, but three issues. One was, as the mayor alluded to, a, the firm of impact fee. I think the fee of eleven thousand dollars per home that's gonna be sold, and they're bidding a lot. And what Seamus is asking for is that impact fee for the two model homes be deferred for one year or until the model home is sold, whichever is sooner.
Right.
The second issue was that Mr. Flanagan would like the permission from the board to build two model homes in that subdivision. He needs the model homes in order to, you know, obviously sell to the public in general. They are not spec homes, they're model homes, so someone can walk in the door, see what the homes can be built like. That's the second issue.
That's correct.
And the third issue would be, there is some issue as to the square footage, the annexation agreement was signed roughly ten, eleven years ago, there's stipulation how large those homes have to be, but there's been some discussion as to what the proposed home would be built in the Eagle Fair subdivision. I think one of our concerns, the board's concerns, was, you know, how would a home of, say, two thousand square foot be compared to a home right next to a three thousand square foot? So the three issues tonight for the board, I believe, was the impact fee deferment for a period of one year or when the model home is sold, two, the right for Mr. Flanagan to construct two model homes, I think he had lots picked out last time, and the third issue would be the square footage of the new homes. Is that missing?
You got it.
And you pay all the water bills for us, right?
Well, and, and, just to clarify, when we had talked about this at the last meeting and the meeting prior to that even, it was discussing the step-down method that was gonna be used was really probably the biggest issue. The deferment, we understand that that's one of those things where we may not be thrilled about it, but it's one of those things where if, if he doesn't build anything, if he doesn't sell the lots, we're not gonna get it in a year anyhow. So if he sell, if he's able to build and he's allowed to defer no more, no more than a year, at least we'd get the impact fee that we need at that time. But as far as the step-down program, have you guys taken the time to review mechanisms for identifying across the street, next door, or whether it be adjacent, lots or would it be the next closest home on either side, or some of the variables we discussed in that regard? I know trustee Pearson was not able to make it to the last meeting, so I'm kinda giving a recap of where we lost some of that again. How do you look like you've got, you've sucked your teeth in this, you got it all figured out? I think the rest of the trustees look at it.
What I had done, and I guess promised to at the last meeting, I did get a chance to meet with Mr. Flanagan about the homes and the lot sizes and where his lots are, and there's, you know, a couple of things come into play, and this is me being the devil's advocate, as you all know, like, that I like to do. He's got thirty-three lots there, and he has asked for us, with our approval, to build the two model homes there. The two model homes, and he is right, as, as far as I can see, I'm not a realtor, but the two model homes that he's picked out on the lots have great visibility in our town, not off the beaten path, along the retention pond, and the two models that he has and picked out, he has two, one at twenty-three hundred and fifty square feet, one at twenty-two hundred, and another one, the third one you... at two thousand. And able to get from Larry, the actual ordinance from him that was said and voted upon, the only stipulation in this, that it be sixteen hundred and fifty square feet in area. So this ordinance is passed and owned by this village, and all three of the plans that he has definitely by far exceeds those requirements. He has done everything that was asked of him and more. He is coming with three fabulous plans to us and putting those up for our village, putting new signage up the heart, start selling homes here with, and building, putting sign-ups, size up in our village to help bring people to our village, to help buy homes, and I can't even understand why that we would be hesitating. We want to do a market study, we want to bring a grocery store here, we will start building and bringing traffic to this town. I think it's frankly a win-win for, for all of us.
Any other trustees have feedback on the step-down program especially?
Sure. My hesitation in this has always, again, been the step-down, I think that's been my biggest call. Ten percent, I think, far exceeds, you know, and again, I can understand that the original ordinance was written at sixteen fifty, however, majority of the homes there are nowhere near that sixteen fifty. So from a matter of law precedence, you know, to me, becomes a factor in this. Yes, do we, can we go back and say, go in there and build a sixteen, you know, hundred and fifty square foot home technically by law, but then you have a bunch of upset residents that are there that are sitting there in twenty-five, three thousand square foot homes that are looking at their property values adjusting, you know, for such a...
And I'll just go back to that too, and looking at even where his lots are in comparison to the ones that are already there, even doing a step-down, even at plus or minus seven percent or eight percent, or comps, you know, their property values will not go down because any realtor will tell you a comp is done on a similar building. A sixteen hundred or twenty-two hundred square foot building is not gonna be in the same comp by any realtor at three thousand square feet. So it's just, it just doesn't happen. And that too, I don't think anybody who's coming in and building would frankly pick a lot, you know, to build an eighteen hundred square foot next to a three thousand square foot because they, you know, will kind of, I don't wanna say dwarf, but it will be markedly smaller. So there are plenty of lots there right now that there will be many, well, up to three or four separating any of the smaller lots, what they expect, well, maybe just across from that one court, not, would you say the, not ribbon court, but falcon court, where there's a couple of big ones there across, you know, across the court, would be the only ones that Seamus owns right now that would be different.
Was there a discussion of a park also that was supposed to go somewhere in there?
There is.
It was there. I dedicated, I gave the village three lots, and it was, it was my ultimate plan, which I think it was at the time, it's constantly somewhere, I can't, I can write it somewhere, that the village was the dream of that, play a lot there and stuff. I, I gave them three lots to do that, as, as part of the original, we started subdivision first, like, the original, the original range, and it was, it was up to the, the village I ceded the lots, and then it was up to the village to, to, I don't know, to put in the day, after they ground and stuff there.
Seamus, so the, the two homes that you're looking to build, your model homes, they're, what sizes are they?
Well, I got, I got, I want two models, but I got three different, I got, one house I'm definitely gonna go with is the twenty-three fifty, like, you know, the one I gave with the pictures of.
Sure.
And there's, there's a twenty-two hundred square foot, which is this one, I, I got a two thousand square foot house.
Okay, and one is the next closest home, I'm not talking about how many parcels in one, the next closest, the most...
A lot, lot twenty-two is on ranch, which is seventeen, seventeen eighty square feet, a lot twenty-two, which is on ribbon, right?
No, I'm sorry, is that adjacent to the property that you're wanting to build on?
Correct. So that's where, if I built, like, two thousand and a twenty-three hundred square foot house, like, you're, you're within the ten percent that you guys are talking about, and like, seventeen sixty square feet, if I built a two thousand square foot house next to him, there's, there's nothing there down the end of it, the park is behind it, like, there's always, I'm gonna complain that it's, it's not, the tiny stores, I can't complain because they're probably bigger than it. If I'm complaining on my head, it's, it's a, it's a complete, you know? But as we go back, I don't know if Larry has any insight in this, like, I, I sold, I sold off some lots there, I sold like, I think sixty lots. I still, I've got maybe twenty, twenty-five lots in there, I still have thirty-three lots. But for the liking of Larry, the driver here now, he bought some lots off me, and here's some of his lots is, is in between two houses like this, that's probably, I think one of them is twenty-six hundred, the other's twenty-seven hundred square feet, like, and, right, we tell Larry can't build there, we tell me can't build, Larry can't build houses there, but he bought the lots I gave him ordinance, the ordinance is sixteen hundred square foot for ranch, it's eighty hundred square foot for two-stroke. Now, if you guys can't tell him, I, I don't know what happens. If he can't build houses there, I, I don't know, like, he's got the ordinance, the village passed the ordinance, what's gonna happen to him? What, what, he must have taken, what, the other village is gonna take, I don't know what, I, I don't know if Larry can answer that question, but I, I just...
Larry's gonna ask a question.
I'm not the door, all right? This, Larry, you're a friend of the door, right?
Larry's a friend.
Couple of questions, Seamus, who was the panel, what would the price be at those homes? I think that was the question.
We, we did a, Mike here did a market analysis in, in the area, he done quite extensively, and I think if he wants, he can talk better, like, it happens to be in the two-fifty range, too far the two-fifty range to get started.
Well, two-fifty enough, popper?
I, I'm hoping for the two-story, two thousand square foot, two-story, but like, maybe two-forty-nine, something like that to get the work, you know?
And again, you wouldn't build a spec house, you only build if you had a higher...
A spec house, no. The two model homes would be for people to see, like, you know? The difference of a spec house, obviously, the model home, the spec house you put up and leave there, hopefully, you can sell it, you know? These would be model homes that, that's gonna have, Mike is gonna have somebody in the office there on the weekends, you know, I don't expect Larry, he's there all the week, the weekends, the traffic, the traffic was out, you know?
You mean like, trustee Horn asked, is it gonna be a brick facade or would be...
Well, the first floor on every house has to be brick, whether it's a ranch, two-story, five, whatever, first floor has to be brick, that's, that's in the ordinance, and I'm not asking, James, that's, that's the ordinance, what do you think?
So what is the, two thousand is the lowest you'd wanna build?
Well, that was the eighty-hundred would be the lowest, you know? I, I wanna start off with...
If you're looking, if you're looking for consensus from the board here, you know, I mean, what do you guys feel comfortable with?
I, I'd be probably put two thousand to start off, I'm ready, I'm definitely over the twenty-three hundred one, you know, twenty-three fifty, whatever. But like, to get, to get, to get the price range, as I said, we, we really, we had signs down there on fifty, right, on, on fifty and, and fifty-seven there, like, where maybe off, they're not even having road to it. The sign is still there, like, you know, but I want, Mike, we're gonna do a bigger sign, we need to put a sign that wins out the road, we need, we need to get traffic. I know the internet and all that is great, but, but people getting off, you need, you need signs, you need traffic, that, you know? But like, as I remember, I think I was at a, yesterday, I told her, like, you know, you always have an option then, you know, add one, two feet, three feet to the house, we need to start off, and then, we're not, we're not, I'm not up with the downsides of houses, like, I, I obviously, like, I can build bigger houses, it's better for everybody, but we need to start off in baby steps, and then, obviously, try to get people, people always come in, they look at a model, say, well, we wish this room was two foot bigger, this kitchen was two foot bigger or something like that. That's when you can push it out, and then add a couple hundred, two or three...
Go ahead.
Last question, is construction traffic, we know that, we lost a lot of the, the bonding issues for the, the repair of those roads over there, and that's, and talking to the residents, because I went down through it and spoke with them, that is a major concern for most of them. How are we looking with being able to bring in more construction traffic in there before the next coat? I mean, granted, that might be a question better suited for, suited to...
Yes, the concerns with or without the construction traffic, the concerns for the roadway, the base coat that is there, the deterioration that's taking place, that is, whether construction starts or not, that is on our capital projects list that we are turning toward now and trying to get prep. That is why the impact fee has been placed on those lots. The intent of doing that was that the village was going to move forward, complete the road infrastructure in there, and that is how the village would get paid back with those impact fees. So I don't know if I answered your question, but certainly it's going to take its toll, but I think keeping things in perspective, I don't believe that, that we're going to see, you know, you know, five and eight houses being built at once. I don't think the market bears that, so with the limited traffic that'll be there, you know, it, we're kind of in a position of what comes first, the chicken or the egg. We, in order to make this work out, I will just say that we need homes to be built and sold, and the impact fees to be paid to complete that subdivision properly.
Because how you want me to talk in there, being a sign, you're gonna have a house, like...
Sure.
Yes.
So because you're asking for some variables here, one of them has to do with the deferment. You would need to separate these out, I mean, I think the deferment was actually a separate issue, wasn't it?
All three, all three were separate, so.
Okay, so can I accept, can I get a motion to address the deferment issue in and of itself? That we would allow the deferment to be, Larry, you prefer reading of that?
Yes, sir, allow, permit the deferment of the eleven thousand dollar impact fee for a period of twelve months or when the model home is built, sold, whichever is sooner.
That's, that's exciseable.
Isn't it twelve thousand?
It is twelve.
I was wondering, I... Twelve? Thirteen thousand, okay? Thirteen thousand. Uh, the impact fee would be...
Pretty approximate, pretty approximate though.
We trust you, Seamus, okay?
I just wanted to clarify.
No problem.
I would make that motion.
Okay. Okay. Can you have a roll call on the deferment?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Potten?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just want to clarify, and that is on the model homes only?
Correct, correct. I believe that's what it was previously stated as well. So we're just reaffirming those items that we're saying. On the second part of this, which has to do with the size and step-down formulation of that, I, yes?
I'm sorry, sir, but could we address the authorization to build two model homes?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Before we even do that, okay?
Yeah, that'll be great.
Thank you.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved.
That was Pearson and his house. Roll call, please, trustee Horn, you restate the...
The approval to build no more than two model homes.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's what I thought was...
Are these considered model homes or spec homes?
Model homes. What is the definition of the difference?
Model home, trustee Horn, is just for solicitation of potential buyers. A spec home, as Mr. Flanagan indicated, he will not put up any spec homes. The only way he'll get a permit would be on him recurring the buyer, correct?
No, it's possibly he could sell a model home.
Well, yes. Yes, but he's not gonna have stock out there, he'll have five or ten homes taken.
So do we, do we want to set a minimum for model homes as well, so that you're not dealing with that as a separate issue? And thereby, hold on a sec, so for instance, he indicated twenty-three hundred square feet, or not less than ten, ninety percent of the next closest home? That, that's not based on a step-down of however many parcels, but that'd be, if the next closest home is three thousand square feet in any direction in that subdivision, I don't, I don't need you comparing the north side of Margaret or Ruby or whatever else, but within your subdivision, if it will say twenty-three hundred would be the bare minimum for model home, and it would be no less than ninety percent of the next closest built home.
I mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that, that's, that's not what I asked for.
Well, that's what I'm asking my trustees, so just one, just one, that's what I'm asking my trustees. Is that what's more palatable to you because of the concerns, because of the step-down program and all the things that we're hearing? So if the next closest home happens to be an eighteen hundred square foot home, then you could build it next to it, but it would have to be a minimum of X square footage, or that would be, if it's twenty-three hundred, it's twenty-three hundred, and not less than ninety percent. So it'd be, Larry, can you reiterate that in a minute or perhaps?
The only question I would have, or being... The only question I would have, Ron, would be, with the ninety percent, if he's planning on a model home, I think it'd be hard to distinguish what the ninety percent would be, until he knows where the next buyer would be.
I'm talking about the next, wherever property he would be building would be the next closest physically built home. So, if it's three parcels away is the next closest, because there's somebody making lots out there, happens to be twenty-five hundred square foot?
Yes, sir.
Then ten percent off of that would be two hundred fifty feet.
Well, would that relate to the model home?
In building a model home, it'd have to fit the same criteria. So, that'd be twenty-two fifty would be the smallest, so it's still, it'd be twenty-three hundred would be the minimum. So, if the next closest one is twenty-five hundred, physically, you know, you know, whatever. I'm just throwing that out there so that it keeps it simpler, because, you know, the step-down program that had been talked about, ten percent, ten percent, ten percent, based on all these formulations, if the easiest way to look at it is to say, regardless of where it's at in the subdivision, you look at the next closest built home, and it can be no less than a minimum square footage, and no less than a ten percent knockoff from the.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Are you doing this as an amendment to the original?
I'm asking for, for the model homes, for the approval for these.
Oh, you're asking for an amendment, you're changing the what's actually before.
Well, it had been tabled previously, so I'm asking for clarifications. Does this make it more palatable for you?
Well, I, well, and I just, and I think, too, by the plans that he already has in his possession, and by the ordinance, we don't even need to amend the ordinance. I think wherever the lots are, wherever you put them, it'll be very close to that ninety percent anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
If I can, if I can, I'm going to consult with Kansas Chair.
David Holson, Kansas Chair, want to clarify that during his conversation with us, I'm not sure everybody caught this, he started off with two model homes, but if he sells one, this allows him to build another one, that he would also be able to put off for a year, I think. So, you're not just talking about the first two here, you're talking about potentially many ones. He might sell one of those first two, and then want to build another model home somewhere else in there. So, you want to be careful in establishing this, that you don't handcuff him by saying, making it too difficult. What I might suggest to the board, because I had a chance to look at this after we had our meeting as well, is you establish a minimum for the model home, since he's going to get benefit out of this, for two thousand feet. Now, the statute in that area allows him to do more less than that for a home that's been sold, and that's okay. But if he wants the benefit of a tax benefit, or a put-off for twelve months, maybe we say, okay, fine, it has to be a minimum of two thousand. And you can adjust that.
So, all that being said, how do you, I'm just trying out another option here for you, instead of just taking it quite the way it was delivered to us, what do you guys want? So, if you had it on, what's it?
Do you have a motion in a sec?
I apologize. So, it's entirely up to you if you want to consider variation.
And can I just ask one, one question, and Mr. Holson brought up a point, too, that I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I assumed that you were going to keep the two model homes and start selling around, not selling one of the model homes before the other.
That's what Mr. Holson asked me at the meeting, and that's the intention. Somebody come in and says, we're moving in out of town, we need a home today, we need to move in a house right away, and then I want to say, no, I can't sell you this house, it's a model, you know, you've got to go somewhere else. If they happen nine years, a hundred and twenty, it depends on whether maybe between four months to wait, I don't know, which just happened to me before in another subdivision. If they're coming in, they're coming out of town, they've got to get in right away. Obviously, I don't want to set them up, because I got all this stuff in it, but if it means selling a house, getting another buyer in there, getting somebody else in here, then I can build a model home, I don't have a problem with that. But, I'm going to try and put them on the last, obviously, but if I don't have time to build them a house, or they want to move in right away, then I set them up.
And you mentioned, too, that you want to build the models next to each other?
Right.
To adjacent lots there.
Right. And I always want to keep two models there, I should also, so it's, go to mind, you know? Only in a case, like, usually, sometimes it happens, you only get a case where people want to move in right away, they don't have time to wait.
Okay.
The trans, job transfer, or whatever.
I'd like to know if you're to speak.
Just, if I could clarify, maybe it would, it could help put the board members at ease. Mr. Flanagan, if you can state to us the size homes that are being built, those for the models, those could be approved this evening, and you can move ahead with that, I think that's what you're looking for. As you sell one, one of two things will happen. The step-down that we are proposing is an overlay for the existing ordinance, so that it was a protection mechanism for existing homeowners of larger homes. There really is not that much variance from three thousand to two thousand square foot home, but, you know, we may be making that a little bigger of an issue than it really is, but to move this off that center, if we can agree on the square footage tonight for the two model homes that he's asking for, if one of those sells, he could easily come back before this board, we can establish the next size on the next lot, and everything is off that center at that point.
Okay. So, there is, there is a motion currently out there, I, I, I'm sorry. We want to consider that being amended to include a minimum square footage for the ones that he's talking about, so that we can at least move that portion forward.
That would be my advice, Mr. Mayor.
So, that would mean, would somebody like to make a motion to amend the motion that's on the table?
Or we can re-.
Are you going to rescind that? Just rescind the motion?
So that surpasses the two thousand?
But he's going to be building two.
Or not the plane trip, that'd be one model two thousand.
May I please say, please, before we go into the, the two homes you're going to build exceed this ten percent thing? There's absolutely no problem, do I agree with the laws? Still, I've seen it again and again in this, we talked about the step-down system, when I was at the P and Z board meeting, and David, please, interrupt me if you have to, you're the matter trustee. I thought that when he was going to build a home, if there's a home that's twenty-eight hundred square foot, the smallest you can go is ten percent next to it. That was our consideration, that's what I thought, was, I didn't make the last word, I don't know what she voted on, but that was kind of the plan, ten, ten, and ten, because you could keep dropping it. I don't know why we can't pass that tonight. You know, only three steps, though, okay? We talked about three steps. But if he builds something next to a whole, a larger home, he can only go ten percent less. He's exceeding that with the two models today. You're right, there's no problem with that. But I don't think we have to meet all the time for him to build another home, long as he follows our step program. It says, if you're between a twenty-eight hundred and a twenty-seven hundred, the smallest you can go is twenty-four hundred. Ten percent of the smaller, you know, do you understand it? I think it's kind of clear cut, what we could write anymore inside. I don't see a complicated issue here. That is agreeable to.
At this point, there is a motion out there, and it's up to trustee Gonzalez, who made the motion, I believe, to.
Actually, trustee Popp.
Trustee?
Gonzalez, say.
Okay, so, directly, I was.
Amendment to the, to the two thousand and the twenty-three fifty?
To these two models, twenty-five to twenty-two thousand, okay?
You know the lot numbers?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so.
One thirty-four is out. But I, I, I was thinking of one thirty-four, but I mentioned trustee Gonzalez, and after talking to her, I think it was a good point, I guess, if, you know, if you have two models you want them, like, side by side, you don't want people driving all over to some.
Trustee Gonzalez is very persuasive.
And it did make sense, like, you know, because you don't want people driving all over, the two models can both come onto the other, then, you know?
Lot twenty-three will have what size?
Two thousand. Lot twenty-two has a house there now, seventeen, seventeen six.
Lot twenty-four?
Lot twenty-two has a house there right now.
Yes, lot twenty-four size?
Twenty-three fifty.
Twenty-three fifty. Mr. Mayor, if they'll amend the motion to include those numbers?
Trustee Popp? Right. Motion is ready, please, do a roll call on that, so.
Roll call, vote, trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Popp?
Yes.
Trustee Racing?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
I don't have to, I guess everyone would look at some services, so I can, I'll be in a minute, Mr. Wallace. We're asleep, I'll be.
You get them closed by?
That's the band, before, before the snoring.
Okay.
Hopefully, we see some new residents.
Is there a point, Ben, that we go?
There's one more.
Mr. Holson?
I said there's one more.
I think we simplified it from a three parts and two part, I believe.
Wasn't there, Mr. Wallace, wasn't there another one that had to do with guarantee? Or did you resolve that?
Are we talking about the temporary, I would say, yes, that's a matter of, we don't have to put that into a motion format, because we control that upfront. We did discuss that.
All right, sorry.
Mr. Flanagan understands that on a model home, there's not a permanent occupancy issue until such time as it's sold.
And you have a good one?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Vote reaffirming to exclude the infrastructure cost from the originally approved forty-five thousand dollars estimated for fall fair expenditures. We had done a phone poll to confirm, this is a motion.
So moved.
Pearson, where is it? Roll call.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Popp?
Yes.
Racing?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
At this point, it's open to the public, non-agenda items. There's one of your candidates, three minutes, come to the podium, give your name, address, and this is what.
I'm Pam West, fifty-six, twenty-one, five Avenue.
Okay.
I was actually volunteer for the block fest by trustee Pearson, and I prepared just a little, a couple pages, a few, two ideas, while they visit, and I have served on many committees, I just want to say that, and I, as they've mentioned in this piece, just saw the camaraderie and the teamwork of everyone there, and I was just really pleased. I'm committing now for next year, for all three days. Keep in mind, as you, as you look at some of the highlighted items, that I was only there on Sunday, was only able to commit for Sunday, so I wasn't aware of those things that might need to be addressed for primary and Saturday. And I just made a little outline, a couple of areas, event rides, and you can, I won't go over each item, you can kind of read it on your own, but I spoke with a lot of attendees there, and also, I was able to, actually, from four to about eight-thirty, do the ticket booth, and so I got a lot of feedback from the participants and the attendees, and of course, if everyone heard, they thought the ticket pricing was a little high. So, I made some recommendations there. I don't know how the vendor piece of the company works, but typically, in, with, I'm on Sinai Committee, I'm on Tussawo Museum, I do NBC, two committees for them, the African Fest, and they have, when you buy so many tickets, and then you, each increment, you save a little bit, so that was one of their recommendations there. The event ride seemed to be really clean, safe, offered good variety, and more inclusive of all age groups. One of the areas of improvement, there was that fury ride, it was like a swing ride, it's my favorite ride, kind of like a biking ship. At some point in Sunday afternoon, they had a series of CDs playing, and there was some really strong vulgar language in there, and there were children present, and of course, Pastor Dodge, who's my pastor, solutions, you know, it's like, right, it didn't matter who's, who's there, but I thought it was inappropriate for a family fest, I don't know if anyone else heard that, but just really harsh, harsh language, so I wanted to point that out. And the recommendation, again, there would be talking with the vendor, and, you know, and know it's going to be a family-friendly event, we like the music to reflect that. At some point, also, on, on Sunday, that same ride was unattended two times by the vendor operators, or whatever you call them, there was no sign there to say we'll be back in five minutes, and it was during the period of the twelve to one o'clock, where we had a special meet youth there, so there was a little frustration, and I think several people might have mentioned it, and they hunted out these individuals, and they returned, but then they left again at a better time. So, the recommendation there, of course, is to speak with the vendor about that putting maybe a back in five minutes sign, but because it happened twice during what we thought was like, everyone thought that was the best thing of that whole day Sunday, to offer a free opportunity from twelve to one to the special meet youth, it just so happened that it happened at that time. The parents were really elated, they thought it was wonderful, the kids had a really good time. On several opportunities on Sunday, the, the youth got right up to the ride, and the parent wouldn't ride with them, because they said, I'm not riding that, and they didn't want their kid to ride alone. Other than our teacup rider, I volunteered, so I got on anything they wanted to ride for that one hour period, twelve to one, and it kind of helped out. My suggestion there was perhaps to have a couple of riders, if you do that kind of thing again. We helped him, assisted him on, I worked with special youth population anyways, so that was just right down my alley, and I think it enhanced their experience, because a couple of them were there, and not so much had any behaviors or outbursts, but I could see them starting to tear up, because they couldn't get on the ride without a belt sign. Oh, I'm riding with you. So, I think I did about three or four rides that day, based on that. Going over to the event food, drink, tickets, the booth area, booths were clean, comfortable, welded, and very cool. Later in the day, I understand, earlier in the day, they were kind of warm, because no one turned the air on, so it took, I think, probably until about three o'clock before they really started cooling off. Many of the attendees indicated that the ticket prices, again, were better than the price. When we told them that it was four dollars for an alcoholic beverage, several people, I worked at Ford, maybe about eight-thirty shift, walked away, they said, four dollars for beer? So, I noted that, because that was a direct comment from the attendees. Again, some of the festivals, I had an opportunity to work with, they do like a band, and you pay a flat fee, and you eat throughout the festival, or you take a band and you drink, you pay a flat fee, and you have, whatever you have, wine, beer, so that was my recommendation there, if a vendor would work with us in that manner. Another area, food, drink, and bungee tickets, food, drink, and bungee ride, ticket pricing information was not available at the ticket booth, and a lot of times, from my experience, people will buy more tickets the first time, if they know what they need. Also, it helps to let free the lines up, they're coming back, give me one more, give me two more. When you have that information, this booth is selling a Polish sausage, or we've got pizza for four tickets, so I said, mm, give me twenty-five. So, one guy came back, and he went around, just as we suggested, and he came back, and he said, give me a hundred, seventeen tickets. But if it would have been right there, you know, he wouldn't have had to go back and forth, so it ended up working out good, that's a good suggestion. The manual ticket machines, they jammed, I actually bought a slip-up tickets from there, when the line was so backed up, because the feeder would not take some of the dollars on a regular basis, so the lines kept backing up. Well, I got, how kind of the first, oh, I know it was, was a lady in front of me, and that last ticket would not come out, it's like halfway, and so she tore it, she only had half a ticket, so I said, when I purchase my tickets, I'll give you your half, and that happened on a regular basis. And that happened on a regular basis throughout, throughout the day. Um, so they rejected a lot of deals, they were, of course, we had to come to the ticket booth to wave in the long lines. Um, another area, we had to call them here about four or five times, people gave fifty dollars, one hundred dollar bills, and we didn't feel comfortable using like the, the visual. We didn't want to be liable, I think is what, what we felt. Um, and you can just buy one of those pens, or you can get a change machine out there, there's a pen that does that, there's a little machine you can slide through. But there was so much that people had to do, we just felt really badly about people and calling people back and you were five fifty. And of course, the attendee had to wait for it, because it seemed a group kind of, no one seemed to get really frustrated. There was one gentleman that just kind of said, oh, that's okay, I'll see if I can get change somewhere else. And then we were limited, so we didn't want to give out change. Um, and certainly not change a hundred dollar bill without having a pair of. Um, I did a little, I actually didn't stamp it, sample, but I did a little makeshift end of the shift report. Um, it was kind of difficult to, what do you call it, cash out or whatever, and people were still coming, so we kind of closed one window. And we said, come to this window, we just did on our own, so we have an accurate account. But we kind of felt awkward because there was like no regular pickups for the money, not, not frequently enough. Um, and then we're sitting there and on, on the four to eight-thirty shift, we did like twenty-seven fifty, it was supposed to three thousand, there was still money in the, the drawer piece. So we just, we didn't know what to do, you count the tickets, so I counted and my partner, who was Dolores, I had a tag in her heart. Um, she counted and I counted again and she counted, then we, we actually wrote what we counted on the money. Uh, and that was our way of verifying that there was no signature or anything. So we felt, when we came on it, for how do we know what we're supposed to have and, you know, was that kind of thing. I think everyone was honest, so when in the ticket booth, that was at least of the problem. Um, however, to make it more accurate, a report of his station might be helpful. Um, the only other things that I identified, there was a couple of restocking issues at the food booth Sunday, and they closed early. A couple of them, of course, that's, um, setting that kind of expectation for your food vendors would certainly help back. Um, many attendees utilized the food and the drink ticket booth for asking general questions. However, we didn't have the information readily available to share with them. And the recommendation was that the event planning committee might consider either providing the volunteers from the ticket booth, with just general information chart about the times that certain things are going to happen and where to direct people to. We kind of felt, felt kind of ignorant, and, um, we wanted to feel more informed. Um, fighting the heat, uh, the last four events that I've done this year in the Chicago area, um, some large companies offered us at no cost a cooling station. And I noticed that a lot of employees or volunteers as well as attendees were red and we all got overheated. Um, there's, they're, they put up free missing stations as well as a, a unit that might be about two times the size of the ticket booth. And it's just a cooling area where if you're overheated, it's run by either the fire department or it's run by whoever's doing your first aid. And you just get a, get an opportunity to cool down, get some ice water, they can put a cold compress on your wrist. Uh, they're trying to prevent people from passing out. Of course, Sunday was not as hot as some of the events I've been in, which have been in the nineties consistently all day. So that was a suggestion, and it'd be great, like our fire department or someone could certainly man, uh, that opportunity to be a fire initiative. Um, the event music, everyone loved the music, they didn't know where to go for the big band, we couldn't hear it from our side. And so we didn't even know where to tell them, we did not have the information. With so many people, as I was asking, are you enjoying the fest? The number one comment is that the gig is just great, in years past, we couldn't even hear ourselves breathe. And the, the, the volume of the music was just way too high. This year, they said it was awesome, that they really enjoyed that. Um, however, between the performances, setup, there was a lot of downtime. Um, and people were sitting there in their launch chairs, you know, waiting for, um, the next performance. And my recommendation in that downtime is kind of have someone from a local PJ, uh, a radio station, come do some line dancing, a dance contest, karaoke, have a celebrity, LeVar Fisher, who used to be, uh, Chicago Bears, was Wright University art, he's helped me on so many initiatives, I know he's with Health Village as well. I don't want to go over our time, so the rest of the items, um, you can, um, kind of go over yourself. One of them, lost and found, I was turning over to the, uh, fire department, but people didn't know where to go and retrieve them. So when they come back, did you see this? Oh, I did, I turned it in there. There were big lost and found, which kind of, uh, would direct the people there. Overall, it was awesome, I mean, I worked with groups that, you know, from NBC to, to Sinai Hospital. And I just thought it was awesome, I was glad that you all allowed me to be a part of it, and I'd be very happy to be a part of it again. My other record last recommendation, which you'll see here in this little cover letter, um, is to use a tool similar to this to give it to all the volunteers, the vendors, enhance, uh, the overall experience of the event. Tons of positive things, you can't satisfy everyone. I think it's dynamic and it can need some help in developing some tools for the measurement, so you can get input, um, about all of the work that you did, I'd be glad to volunteer for that too.
Thank you very much.
You want me?
Pam, you need to go on for three minutes, you know that.
What happens? Did you tell my wire wrong?
Thank you for the call, Mr. Wallace.
Hi, my name is Collette Moore, two five eight, two eight South Hoover floor. Um, I just getting hired, um, a EMA director or devils or supervisor.
Correct, correct.
Um, is the person here?
Yes, we're going to do it.
Um, what I wanted to do was to find out how you plan on getting the community involved in case of emergencies. Um, do you have any plans yet?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be happy to speak with you after, afterwards when we talk about it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Collette, one of the things that, it was kind of a combination of a position here. Ruben is also, he's our EMO director, he's also our community services coordinator. And I, when, I think the trustees understand as well, when you, when you have a situation like we have with this festival that was put on on a very short notice, it was not quite a crisis situation, but it gave us ample time to identify team building and personalities and all of this. For, it, it was just a great experience for putting some of that together. So I think that some of that, when you talk about bringing the community together, there's more to it than the frivolous aspect of the festival that is actually really substantial when it comes to knowing who you can count on in a crisis. And those are the kind of people that, uh, are going to be very pivotal when it comes to actually developing the full out, deeper program.
See, because I'm, I'm actually, I'm sure the local county, my health department, I'm a, I'm a, so I volunteer, yeah, that's what I did to other-
Sure.
Please look for them, I want to drag you in, come in, we get home.
I don't think they'll even let me run your light bar, so. Thank you very much. Please, thank you very much. Anyone else? Come ahead.
Me, Andrew, two five seven, three six, South Hoover Street. I have two comments, one little bad, so I'll start with bad. I just hope this board, um, I understand what you said about, you know, bringing more houses, more people into the community, I get that. But Mr. Flanagan has made promises and took a hike on this board in the past. He'll do it again and again and again, so that. Going to sit here and say, I told you so, if I could have gotten here sooner, I would have spoke before again on him being on the agenda. But I just hope that he doesn't do it to this board what he has done to several boards in the past. So please be careful and be very specific when it comes to him, because he will, every single time. I mean, that's why we have the impact fee for him, and he'll, he'll skate out of it. So that's my bad. My good is, um, you know, I am a little bit of a skeptic and, you know, so, um, when it came to Fall Fair, just try and pull it off so, how, so quickly, but I do have to say that I think it went over very well. I think you guys did a great job. I would have liked to have seen a few of the trustees a little more visible, um, but everyone came together. Um, I was there Friday and Saturday volunteering, I'm happy to volunteer, it's for the community, it's for everybody. It's not about me, it's not about you guys, it's for everybody. But this different setup, I really liked it. Um, I don't have a long list of things we can tweak, I do have suggestions when we have a Fall Fair meeting that I'd like to be included. Um, the only big thing I would say, there's no tech, tickets on the food vendor, that's a hassle. But that's the only, I mean, otherwise, I think the Fall Fair went really well, I think you guys did a great job putting it together.
And your first point is duly noted.
Thank you.
And he will be watched.
I hope so.
Anybody else?
Mr. Tito. Five three two six, West Main, AKA Corney, the circle. Um, but I had a serious subject, uh, over the last two weeks, uh, my house, which is on the corner of Main and Linden, has had three, uh, incidences, uh, that were pretty, uh, domestic bound type of situations where the police had to be called. Um, and all three of them were literally crossed his right foot into our house. Um, the first one was about a weekend after those domestic violence call party in the morning. Second one was last Friday night, as my wife and I were walking across to go to the Fall Fair backyard, which we live right front, in front of us. Another occurrence occurred right literally in our yard from, uh, people having a domestic, uh, uh, difference of opinion, pretty violent one. And then the last one was last night, as I was trying to water my yard, while I went back to work, when we had people literally fighting, they were straight in front of us. I want to commend the police department for the way they handled all three situations, my wife and I saw all three because we live right there. Uh, in all three cases, all the officers that came were there within two minutes, we called, two of the times we called, and they were there within two minutes. Uh, in all three cases, they handled it very calmly, very calm voices, they used a more, uh, patient than I could ever possibly use to handle a situation. Um, and in all three cases, they were able to resolve the situations, uh, fairly effectively from my observation. Uh, we didn't sit there listening, but we were there, so we knew, you know, what was going on. And, uh, for people that can always complain about the village police, I think they need to be aware of how good they really are. The officer last night, there's two officers last night, one male, one female, the officers on one of the other occasions were at least one female. And, uh, you know, they handled it very well. And it was, the guns were never drawn, nobody was, the officers were never raising their voice, they handled it calmly. And the people I were talking to were not calm. And literally last night, before they got there, there was two people slugging it out with each other. And my wife and I are concerned about, we're talking, so nice job achieved, appreciate that.
They're probably fighting over those grapes you just harvested from your vines. Anybody else? Okay, nothing else, we'll close open to the public. I don't believe we have anything for executive session tonight. And I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Don't.
Sorry. We're either one of you guys. Gonzalez, one.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Racing?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Yes.